We'll call this October 18 Jackson County Commission Work Session Order. Have our round call.
District one, Mr. Winkler. Present. And District two, Mr. Miller.
Present.
And District three, Mr. Miller. Present. And District four, Mr. Reddick. Present. And District five, Mr. Johnson. Present.
And we're going to present have our invocation by Mr. Porter in our place.
Lord God, as we look around us, we're mindful of all the blessings that we have that you've provided for us, this beautiful weather and the country that we live in, and it's a great county that we live in. God, we're so blessed and we're so thankful for those blessings. We pray that you'll watch over us and guide us and direct us every day, forgive us when we fail you and fail others. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is approval of the agenda. We have seven items on the agenda. One item regarding sanitation has been removed and will be on the work session agenda in November. And then you have revised on call agreement, which was that, that was done since, was melted out Thursday. So are there any other changes before we proceed? Have motion to approve the agenda presented.
On move.
Motion second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. As opposed to saying no. Okay, we've had one person sign up to speak, Mr. Gary Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner. I passed out an information sheet. I don't think there's much of your time on this. But last week during the commission meeting, I believe there was a discussion about e-cigarettes and the sheriff department selling e-cigarettes in the commissary. I provided you some information on this. I had asked the sheriff if this was a tobacco product. He said no, but actually it is. And the reason, this is important. You know, whatever y'all decide on, whatever the sheriff decides on, you know, that's, that's fine. And citizens, you know, they're going to support y'all and support the sheriff until a lawsuit happens. And then, you know, this whole thing will be up in the air. And that's one of the purposes of this, numerous lawsuits on these e-cigarettes. I think y'all need to be appraised of this. And also, I've listed references on here where you can go on the web to find these references. There's several national law firms that are representing clients on this. There's even reports of batteries exploding in these things. So all is not so well as it, people may be led to believe on this. So I would just ask you to consider, and if the sheriff was here, I'd give him a copy of this, but since he's not, I'll take a copy down here at the sheriff's office. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Move on to our discussion items. And the first is the Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's Day. We have approved for the holidays, as regularly approved Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, and the first of January for New Year's Day. Since we are now closed on Fridays, Christmas and New Year's Day also do fall on a Friday. So it would be for us to consider whether we wanted to extend that holiday an extra day, day and a half, or how we want to proceed. So we'll open that up for discussion. And before doing so, we might consider even if we do half a day, you know, for Thanksgiving or New Year's, or maybe a day for Christmas, I think extending that day since we are closed.
We'll just do Thursday before each, each one of them.
So the Thursday before Christmas, the Thursday before New Year's, Thanksgiving is on a Thursday. Would we add any time or leave it at that? I would recommend we maybe give half a day at least for Thanksgiving.
You talking about for Wednesday or something?
Yeah. Give half a day off that Wednesday prior, but yeah, that's how we want to do that.
I guess people travel and that would help a bit. Any thoughts on it?
And we didn't take any of this into consideration when we'd done the budget. So this hourly pay is already budgeted.
Right, yeah, all the hours are budgeted.
I would be in support of doing a day for Christmas, a day for New Year's, and a happy day for Thanksgiving. And we've already got considerable pay from the employees and something small that we can do.
With that, they won't be paid for Christmas Day as it is on a Friday. They'll be paid for the day that we put it on. So as you said, a day for Christmas, a day for New Year's.
Yeah, and a happy day for Thanksgiving.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that? And again, we can chew on this, we vote on it next week, but I wanted to make sure we're prepared to look at that. So we, we'll look at that proposal then for next week, and if any other changes, we can make that then. Any other thoughts? All right. That'll be on next week's agenda. And again, if anything else at that point, we can discuss then. Next item is affirm the mapping appointment. Three months ago, we made an appointment, our transfer from sanitation department to mapping, Mr. Renns Rider. We said we were going to do it for three months and kind of look how things went with the situation scenario. Having him in mapping is working. We had four or five folks leave from that office, so this was one replacement for that. They're pleased with that, and I would request that we affirm that appointment as a permanent appointment in mapping next week. So any questions or comments on that?
Is this a recommendation of the Navy Commission?
Yes. And in doing so, of course, long-term, we'll discuss this, was on the agenda today, will be, has been moved to November, looking at a, someone to take over ultimately for the collections and sanitation. That's what he was doing before, working on that to some extent. But we would be looking at someone that would take that on as a full-time part, which would be that replacement. So that's what we'll discuss in November.
Okay.
So any other questions, comments on this? Okay. Next item is regarding the animal ordinance, and I'll let Mr. Porter kind of explain. I know he had some emails back and forth to kind of explain what we wanted and where we, he thought we might go, but anyway, I kind of don't.
I went back and looked at the ordinance again after we talked last, last week, and, you know, the ordinance just really doesn't address this at all. I mean, there's nothing in the ordinance that addresses live trapping of animals by a landowner on his own land. That doesn't mean that you couldn't amend the ordinance if you want to, to include a statement that simply says that nothing contained herein prevents that from occurring. Now, to do that, you have to go through the ordinance process, which means to amend the ordinance, you got to go through the same process we did when we adopted the ordinance, and that is, you have to give notice of what the proposed amendment's going to be, and you have to have a public hearing, and you have to have, give notice of the public hearing, you got to publish it on the paper, which I'm sure Mr. Glass would appreciate. But then you got to have the hearing, then you got to publish the amendment, the ordinance, the amendment, the ordinance. So you can do all that. What you might want to consider is rather than going through that lengthy, expensive process, it's simply to, since the ordinance doesn't really address it at all, is just adopting a resolution that says, in effect, it was not the intent of the Jackson County Commission to prevent or to prohibit a landowner from live trapping animals on their own property. And then you have expressed that opinion in that statement. Put it in a, you know, in a resolution form, it'll be part of the public record. If anybody ever questions it, it'll be there. But it's just a lot simpler than go through the amendment or the ordinance process.
That sounds good. What protection would you give a landowner, say, somebody leases a piece of property for, for hunting?
Right.
And it's overrun with domestic dogs or whatever, and they trap those, those animals and tack them to the...
The, you know, the commission was able to adopt a dangerous animal, it's not an animal ordinance, it's a dangerous animal ordinance because of the Limited Self-Governance Act that allows the commission to do that. And so, you know, we had a discussion, if you remember, I'm sure you do, that we had a discussion from landowners and hunters about animals, dogs specifically coming on the property during hunting season. And that's not addressed in the ordinance, allowing, only if it's a dangerous animal is it, is it addressed. So I'm not sure, as far as protecting a landowner or a leaseover of land, hunting lease, I don't think there's really anything the commission can do to protect a landowner. I think that's outside of our jurisdiction. If it is considered to be a criminal violation, there's not really much the commission can do, but I don't think they have the authority to do anything that would protect them. We can simply make a statement to that effect, but I don't, if it's, you know, cruelty to animals, it's cruelty to animals. And there's not anything the commission can do.
I don't feel that we should regulate what a landowner can do on this property regarding missing animals.
I think I know what your intent is, I know what you're trying to do, because of the complaints that you've gotten and about people's dogs running loose and messing up the hunting. So, but I, I just think it's a stretch to try to amend the ordinance when it doesn't say anything about it to start with.
The ordinance does say nuisance, and that is a nuisance, is that correct?
Resolution would simply state, like I said, it would state that we did not intend to prohibit that.
Right.
That provides a little bit of support.
But still, Ray, don't answer the question, though. It's still amended.
Are there any outlaw on the books, I mean, the sheriff mentioned livestock operators and, you know, they could...
Protect their livestock.
Protect livestock. But is there any laws on the books without my mother?
No. Not unless you pass a leash law. And that's, that's, you know, and that's really, what you're trying to do is get a limited leash law to keep people from allowing their dogs to run on other people's property, and especially during hunting season. And so to try to finesse that into a resolution of the issue is just really difficult under the circumstances, because you don't have, we don't, we don't have a leash law.
How do we want to proceed? Ultimately, there is no protection against the state law, if there is a state law. I think the point on, ultimate point on this, I think, is that a case-by-case basis, even with a leash law, cruelty to animals under certain circumstances would still apply.
Sure.
And of course, anybody might claim that if they feel like...
Yeah. I don't think the county commission can give consent or basically immunity to a landowner or a land, less E, to exempt them from state laws regarding cruelty to animals, which we're really talking about. I just don't think we can do that.
Do you want to pursue the resolution, want to chew on this some more before we figure out how to proceed?
Yeah, at the very least, I mean, I'd like to pursue the resolution stating that it's not our intent to go in the chair.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments? If you could prepare that, let's see what that looks like. Will I place it on the next meeting, or do we want to do it on the work session?
The next work session.
Okay. So place that on November, I think it's the second work session, November 4. Okey-dokey. Next item regarding Guardian Dental. We discussed this in a previous work session. I think there were some concerns and thoughts on this that had come up at that time. I've requested a list of other folks that are using Guardian for dental services and are seeing that today, and I need to make some calls with some of those other individuals. Also, is there anyone that would be interested in meeting with a representative from Guardian to go over this, ask some questions, concerns, anything like that? And we could do it either on the phone, or we can do it in the office sometimes. If you had questions or concerns, or you could email those also. After looking at it further, again, I did want to make sure I called some of these other individuals. We've had the vision, as far as I'm aware, we've had a pretty good response, a pretty good relationship out of the vision coverage that we've had over the past year. I think what we'll do is we will send something out to employees and see if they've had any concerns with the vision process and see how that's worked for them. We'll do that this week also, to see what, if any concerns have, have risen up. The bottom line of this plan, it does save the county a few dollars, not a whole lot of dollars, but it does save the county a few dollars. And if we're getting good service, I think that, you know, a proper thing to do. So that's the only other thing I know to look at this week, was to check on some of the service records with some of the other groups that they provide, and then check with our own folks and see how the vision coverage has treated them over the past year.
One thing I'd like for them to, if they could, if they could tell us, we're a little confused. I thought this was a better plan than I was thinking. But I think some of the employees had...
It's the same plan that we have now, this base plan.
They're saying different.
Yeah, it's the employees. We've had several employees come to us and ask us not to change until, you know, we know we're different. You know, I'm going to recommend we do not so.
What are the concerns?
That their dentist does not accept Guardian.
There's only like one, they said, one or two, and in our county, they accept it.
No.
And people are having to change.
Out of the ones in the Blue Cross network, there are only two in the Blue Cross network that are not in this network at this moment. And I think they're considering adding Guardian into their network as well. So there's only two.
That's what I wanted to see. I wanted to see if they could sit down and show us what's the difference in two.
Well, I have the list of those. As far as this, Ms. Willis has the information on the benefits, and the benefits compare side by side.
I would like in the future for us to form a committee with some employees and of course yourself. Anytime we're dealing with a benefit, an employee benefit, I think the employees need to be involved in this and, and give us recommendation, and that way, everybody's done the homework. Get different folks from different departments and let them come together and then make a recommendation.
Well, in that sense then, I think it'd be good, like we said, to set a meeting up, have the Guardian representative come in, and we can do that.
Maybe, you know, this one, I know it's a little too quick to do it, but maybe you can get a person from each department to sit in on this meeting, and then we can kind of know what's best for the employee.
What about the regular employee that you had?
Right, regular employee, yeah.
I was saying maybe the employees that had talked to y'all and had a concern, maybe that would be the best ones to set, you know.
Well, I'd also ask them to come talk with me too, and, you know, see, see if those concerns are something we can address quickly. But what I'll do, let me see how quickly we can get a meeting with the Guardian representative set up. If we're still not prepared, we may push this, you know, into November. We do need, I think enrollment actually does begin in November. So we'd have to look at timelines and things like that if we wanted to try to pursue this this year. But let me see what I can do to schedule, maybe like that too.
Well, we want to make it clear, you know, our job is to look at reductions and find the saving, but also, you know, these employees, I think, on some of these decisions like this would be very beneficial to us. They'll have their input heard, and then we can move on.
Also, we do not care about local business, you know. We've stayed with, you know, my family's stayed with their, I care for my daughter. Guardian doesn't, you know, they didn't accept Guardian, but we stayed with our high care provider, but, you know, we've been with them for years, and, you know, I don't want to do anything to be detrimental to local business.
Yeah, that's right. Look at, see what we can do to schedule. Any other questions or comments?
Probably for us to talk to our individual dentist and get a little insight there.
Yeah. I can send, I'll send you the list of what the minister on the network. Like I said, there are two on Blue Cross that are not on this network at this time. Next item regarding the TBA cleanup agreement. Y'all have a copy of the contract. We presented this at a previous work session, I believe, and the question that was asked at that time is, could we subcontract this? And we had contacted TBA, and they said that we could subcontract. There are a couple things they wanted to make sure that, you know, in doing that, that we're not bound or whatever, but essentially, if we do it, enter into this agreement with the TBA, we could subcontract to handle this and any other items that we wanted to do, as long as we're getting the job done. Now, Mr. Barnes, did you have anything that you wanted to say or add on this? I don't know if you were out of your short section.
I think you're just going to do that for being, is that right?
Well, if we agree to it, we would be responsible for it beginning, and then of course, we would, if we wanted to pursue that, you know, bidding it or however we wanted to go about the process. But this would, this would give us a responsibility of maintaining that, and then we could handle that responsibility through hiring, contracting someone, or handling ourselves, whatever way we go about it.
It's good they told you, you were verbally, the agreement does say it has to be written.
Right, which again, it needs to be, well, I've got it on email, so.
Okay.
Is that satisfied? Again, ultimately, if it doesn't suffice or things don't meet the requirements that we have, the agreement can be canceled. So no one's really out anything at that point.
We're going to ask them to increase, look at the map.
Ask them to increase location before we even start.
I went, I was looking at spots.
What was it?
I was asking if you had, looked at the map and...
You have a copy of...
Two things I had a chance to look at a little more in depth. Paragraph 10 miscellaneous, it says, to be enforced and interpreted under laws of the state of Tennessee. That should not be, it should be state of Alabama. I understand TBA's in Tennessee, but we're not, so. And paragraph eight, indemnification, that provides that if anything happens on that premises, somebody gets hurt on the premises, then we have agreed to indemnify TBA for that.
Now, if we, if it's our own employees, I think obviously we maintain that liability. If it is a contractor and they have the insurance, would that be something we would do with the contract we employ them for?
We could, if we...
We have to officially insure the owner if they get hurt.
And what about public?
Well, this, this says, if anybody's hurt on the premises, then we agree to indemnify TBA.
So that could mean just the public, somebody that...
Somebody put their boat in, they fall, hurt themselves, and say that...
Do we need to clarify that that's, that's only for...
While working.
The practice of which.
Our, our employees or employees that are cleaning the area.
It needs to be spelled out in the...
Yeah, only, only those employees do the maintenance, the cleanup.
Could you, could you write that, and I can get that to TBA, see if they agree to That would definitely be something we want to...
Correct. Well, if it was, if it was a hundred thousand dollars, it'd be different, but for five thousand dollars, I'm not sure we want to accept that responsibility.
If they're leasing or achieving the property, that'd be different.
Right.
Essentially, they'd be giving us the same liability we have at Jackson County Park.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. Okay, anything else?
No.
So those two changes, any other changes, anyone has concerns over the top? Would we be prepared, if TBA's amenable to those changes, would we be prepared to move forward with this next week? We're going to place this on the meeting, you know, pending those changes. If those changes aren't prepared or they haven't accepted by that time, we can always move on. Does that agree?
Good to me.
We'll place that on the agenda for next week also. Okay. Next item regarding the Tarkog CRX MOU. Do you have a copy of the memorandum of understanding for the CRX program? This is about the same dollar amount that we received last year. We both did 20,000 last year and received just over that, and both 20,000 this year, and it's 20,048. So this would be Tarkog's funding towards that program. And the other large part of this funding comes, or used to come from, or I guess still receiving some from the emergency five dollars, so those dollars are still in question as long as we're receiving that. We can maintain the program. Thoughts, questions on this? If there's an objection, then we'll place this on the agenda for next Monday as well. Okay, next item, revised on-call agreement for public work department, so Mr. Campbell.
The information I provided to you, I'll highlight some of those items that are on that, as well as some of the conversation in the email. Essentially, some of the highlights will be the coordination in changing this, which will be done by supervisors, and that call will go to the supervisor or leads in this rearranged agreement. And in this agreement, it will encourage the minimum leave requirements, which should be beneficial to the employee in the county. And then also, with this agreement, it will encourage two 40-hour work weeks per pay period, so that in order to receive the overtime guarantee in this on-call agreement, full 40-hour work weeks must be for two, you know, two weeks in the pay period. You have to have full 40-hour work weeks to receive the full overtime. And this is, this is basically arrived at because due to low participation in the on-call agreement that is current, and I feel like we have to move to a more attractive option to get participation.
This kind of clarifies the process as well, Greg.
Yes, sir, it does. And one, one added benefit will be direct supervision and supervisors involved in decision-making. So that should, you know, enter in a large factor that's not necessarily going on now, as well as provide some consistencies for our emergency responders when they call and have conversations with our department. There's consistency there on who they're talking to throughout this process, and that clarifies some of that.
Mr. Campbell, the last sentence you may regret to add, if holiday calls are then that week of call, fully must work 32 hours minimum, because working, you know, 40 hours during the holiday week is probably going to be rarely reached.
It'll be 30.
Be 32.
Yeah.
This, that way you got it in there.
Yes, sir.
I know it's understood, but sometimes if it's not enough, it tends to cause a problem.
Yes, it does. I guess it would technically be 30 more now. Is that right?
Yours would, yours would be 32.
Okay.
Because you're still on 10s, right?
It could be 40 hours accumulated by holiday.
Oh, you are on 10s. Yours would be 30.
You could put 40 hours accumulated by time work or holiday time.
Yeah, we need some language to account for the holiday time.
Yeah, we need to, just to make sure we're all up.
The on-call schedule is a seven-day schedule?
14 days.
14-day schedule?
It's a week period.
Yes, sir. It'll be 14-day period coincided with payroll period.
I think we need to look at the last item and consider whether that needs to be modified. That's very attractive.
That's very well warranted too, though, in my opinion.
It's a bit of a left of what several other municipalities already offer.
It is attractive, but what you're going to do is, is get participation by the majority of the employees.
Their arrival on that, essentially, you know, kind of like y'all are discussing, less attractive than some of the utilities, which I... attractive than some of the utilities, which I, I would state that the utilities, in my opinion, that's a, that's a larger obligation. That's, that's probably a daily call-out, you know, thing. Some of the counties I've listed there for comparison, we are coming in more attractive than that. However, you know, you've had one employee been on call for a year and a half because nobody wants to take it, and then there's somebody else they can beg and bargain with to try to take it for the weekend. So, in my opinion, right now, it's, it's, it's nothing, it's, it's nothing desired, so the participation you're getting, the effort you're getting is probably similar, and then the supervisor's involvement is non-existent. So, with this, your supervisors have agreed to field the calls, coordinate the response, you know, with essentially no pay, as long as they don't have to show up and actually end up having to perform some work, so.
Questioning what that is, I'd be compensating for it.
Yes, sir.
Any other thoughts or questions? I like it.
I like it.
Good to have a policy, if we update the policy, too, I think if there's some questions. Okay, if there's an objection, then we'll place this on the agenda for next week, that for approval. That concludes the items on our agenda. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barnes?
Hi, Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lagan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Our meeting, we do have a meeting tomorrow, 1:00, I believe. And that is it. And I think that's it. So, with that, we entertain the motion to adjourn everything, although the board will say aye.
Aye.